Good evening, welcome to the Tuesday, May 24th Board of Education Regular Meeting. We have Mr. Liu, Mrs. Brand, Mrs. Dow, Mrs. Zahn, Dr. Title, I'm here, Mr. Matola, Mrs. Iaccone should be here momentarily, Mrs. Albin, Mr. Carey, and Mr. Fattabean. Let's all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nice to have someone in the chair. Okay, we're at item number three, Student Committee Liaison Reports. The Ludlow Rep is not here, I don't see a Ward Rep tonight, so we'll go to Mrs. Albin. Do you have anything tonight? Okay, Mrs. Albin.
Any reports?
Any reports? That's okay. Mrs. Brand, any reports tonight?
Yeah, last Thursday morning, the six to six held its last meeting of the year for the board. They've actually made and do very well on their test scores, and they were going through the results of the year. And the one issue that they find that they consistently have as a problem is every single time the kids leave in the spring and then come back in the fall, they pretty much lose all the ground. And they're starting from scratch every single year. So they've tried to come up with, you know, numerous kinds of things to adjust that. The other thing is, these are, because this is a magnet school, people want to be here. It's not like we don't have highly motivated students. But I think it speaks to the fact that it isn't an unusual phenomenon, and they are doing their best to address it, doing some programs during the summer, trying to get kids involved in library, but it's still a challenge. The next CES meeting is next week, and the next Board of Health meeting is June 13th. There is a new member of the Board of Health, Ms. Carolyn Shea, and if anyone would like to see her resume, I'd be happy to forward it to them. And that's it. Oh, Policy, actually, again, that has a lot of our content in here, and it will speak for itself. Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Brand. Mrs. Dow?
Thank you. For Finance Committee, as everyone knows, we met twice prior to the, to discuss the budget, prior to these Budget Board meetings. Our next meeting is scheduled for June 6th. There's no report on Cabe, on SEPTA. We had a very nice and a very busy meeting in May. First, SEPTA had given a grant to an organization called Casey's Place. Casey's Place is basically a place for adults, young adults, 18 and older, who have special needs, to meet and gather together to socialize on a Friday night. They do meet in the First Church Congregational here in Fairfield, and they can, like I said, socialize, play games, listen to music, these kind of things. And so, a group of these young adults with some of their adult supervisors came to say thank you for the grant, which was very nice. And then, we gave out a Friend of SEPTA Award to Donna Spigaro, who is a special ed teacher at Roger Lilo Middle School. And, again, very nice when you saw the thank yous and dedications that come from the parents, as well as students who do get up and spur the moment, impromptu, get, you know, moved to say thank you, and you see how much these teachers, what a change they make in some of these children's lives, so that was nice. And then, we ended the evening with a question and answer period, and a presentation from some representatives from the Fairfield Police Department. They've started a crisis intervention team, I have spoken about this at some other meetings, where they're trying to get to know the SEPTA and work with them, so that, and start some kind of program, so that they know if they, there's a problem, and they meet someone who has special needs, they don't always, you know, they don't always interact well, and that they know that the person then is special needs, and, you know, would take a different approach than to the student, the child. So, we had a presentation on what they have come up with so far, with a chance for parents and staff to give feedback on that, and then a question and answer period. So, they were, they were busy this last month, when they're doing Feeding Operation Hope on May 27th. And tonight, they had a fundraiser, thanks to Riverfield PTA at Friendly's, where they were getting 15% back on, and that was something that Riverfield set up for SEPTA. So, they've had a busy month, and will be meeting again on June 8th.
Thank you, Mrs. Dow. Mr. Fattabean?
Well, the Transportation Safety Advisors have been pretty quiet, there's no report.
Okay. Let's see, Mrs. Iaccone's not here, she gets here, we'll go back to her. Mr. Carey?
Neither PTA Council nor the Facilities Subcommittee have met since our last meeting, so no report.
Okay. Mr. Liu?
Oh, but in regard to the PTA, I would like to say that, an announcement that our own Sue Brand has been awarded, the Fairfield PTA 2011 Dina O'Keirinen Award, so I'd like to congratulate her. And that award is going to be on Wednesday, June 1st, at Fairfield Ward High School, in the Library and Media Center at 7:00.
Thank you.
And no report in terms of the Building Committee.
Thank you. Congratulations, Mrs. Brand. I do not have a report. Mrs. Zahn?
Thank you. Quickly, the High School Scholarship Foundation, like I reported last time, wasn't able to do a spring fundraiser this year, so they will have their fall fundraiser, Evening Ton or Excellence, which they've had over the last few years very successfully, and that'll be November 6th, so everybody should be getting invitations for that. Thank you.
Okay, so now, we are on item number four, Superintendent's Report. Any report, Dr. Title?
Just a couple of brief things on, just want to fill in, Mrs. Iaccone was probably going to report on the Representative Town Meeting, that some of us had the pleasure of attending last night. They took up two items, you probably read about this in the press, so it's not news, but I'll get it into the record. The Holland Hill Oil Tank Project, there were two projects that had been held over, the Holland Hill Oil Tank and the Tomlinson Facade work. So, the Tomlinson Facade work was postponed to a date certain of June 27th, which is the last Monday of the month. So that is still alive and kicking, they're looking for some more specific information for us to provide, we will do our best to provide that, and then, we hope the project will be approved on June 27th at the RTM. The Holland Hill Oil Tank, after a lengthy discussion, focusing mainly on whether the replacement tank should be underground, above ground, in the school, not in the school, and what size, we finally broke the logjam with an agreement that the money would be appropriated, and that we would bid alternate prices for the different options that I just described, and that we would agree that the selectmen, the body, the Board of Selectmen could pick which of the replacement options they thought was in the best interest of the town, and we would abide by that. So that passed. So, we will replace the Holland Hill Oil Tank, which was the most important thing, getting it out of the ground and get it remediated, since we were on the state watch list for that, and we were subject to being fined, and so, that, that took, I don't know, two and a half, three hours last night, but we, at least we got half a loaf, right? And so, there's still one, from the long-range plan, still one project still alive and kicking, so if any of you would like to come on June 27th to the RTM to watch the Tomlinson project unfold, you're more than welcome. And the only, under, from my own report, I just, I put out in front of you the strategic school profiles, they are, as you can imagine, very late and very old. Normally, you get these in November. I mean, I've always distributed them to my boards in November, but the state was so messed up this year, to use a technical term, with their data systems, for some reason, and they've just released them. And so, we got them, and we just got them printed, and the rule is, you have to give them out to the board, sort of, the first meeting after you get them, didn't even have time to put it on the agenda. So you have them. So we've met that. If you have any questions, Gary or I can help you with that, but really, it's old data at this point, so to have some sort of presentation on it seems a little moot, and I want to discuss the issues, I think, let's wait till next November, when they, we get updated data. They're for '09-10, right? So this is your bound thing, that's what this is. So I just, that's why you're getting it, and it was the state, they just couldn't get it right. And we went back and forth and around and around with them on that. That's my report.
Okay. All right. Moving on, we are, number five, Old Business, Item A, Discussion and Approval of Budget Adjustments for 2011-12. Recommended Motion that the Board of Education Approve Budget Adjustments for 2011-12. Kind of a motion, Mr. Carey, seconded by Mrs. Zahn. Okay, so what I would like to do to start the discussion, is at our last meeting, when we met in open executive session, which was a week ago, this past Monday, we saw Dr. Title's original recommended budget adjustments, and we asked him to go back and do some alternatives. And that's what we received on Friday, and I believe that was posted online Friday afternoon, and so the public could have a copy of it. And then, what we have in front of us tonight are the actual numbers that correspond with what was posted online on Friday. Is that right, Dr. Title?
That's correct.
Okay. And this information is in the back of the room, if people don't have it, and it was published again online on our website. So, and then, what we did last week for the benefit of the public is, on Thursday night, we had, yes, it's all right.
The motion we have before us is not all that clear. Perhaps the mover and the seconder would like to be more specific, so that we know what document we're talking about?
Yep. That's fine. I was going to get to that, I think that's a good idea. Thursday, we had public comment for about, what, about two hours, two and a half hours, and that's all we had. So, Mrs. Albin makes a good point, if Mr. Carey wants to make a more specific motion, and then we can work off of that. You want to do so, Mr. Carey?
Yes, so I'm going to move to, let me get to my agenda here. Recommended Motion, Board of Ed Approve Adjustments 2012, as listed in the document dated 5/12/2011, the Superintendent's Original Recommendations is what I'll move to pass.
The original, okay.
And if we want to discuss that, then.
Okay, so the motion on the-
The amended one or the original one?
The amended one?
The amended one?
I kind of like the original one, so if we want, if we want to go to the-
Well, I'm not seconding that one.
Right. You have a problem.
Okay. So I'll take a friendly amendment to go to the amended one.
The revised 5/24.
Which is revised 5/24.
Okay, so the motion on the table is that the Board of Education, that the Board of Education approve budget adjustments, let me say this again, that the Board of Education approve 2011-2012 recommended budget adjustment alternatives dated May 20th, 2011, how's that? No, it's this.
No, that the Board of Education approve budget adjustments for 2011-12 as a revised 5/24.
5/24/11, seeing that I won't get a second for 5/12.
Yes.
Okay. So is that your motion, Mr. Carey?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Yes, I seconded it.
All right. So, why don't I let Dr. Title explain this, and then we can ask questions, and, go ahead, Mrs. Brand.
I'd like to offer, then, if we're going to do it in that order, an amendment to the amended document. It is a proposal that I handed out to the board and sent them earlier.
I'm going to let you do that, I promise.
Well, okay, because where my concern is, is I'd like to have this, at least have the opportunity for discussion, and it may not, if we vote this and don't even consider this.
What I will do is, what I wanted to do, just so, I wanted Dr. Title to explain this, and then I will allow you to make your amendment to this document.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine. Thank you, appreciate it.
You're welcome. Go ahead, Dr. Title.
Okay, I'll be as brief as I can. When we left the May 16th meeting, it was clear that majority of the board present had major angst about the pay for the participation in athletics. So you asked me to come up with some alternatives to reach the reduction, and then we had the public comment. So, we had the directive from the board, plus the public comment for me to soak in, and then go back to the budget, see what I could come up with. So, just a brief overview of this, I mean, it's in a variety of places. One is, because you had approved a tuition rate for the preschool program at the ECC, we then could plug that into our applicant pool and generate $20,000, which then would offset preschool costs. We, you asked me to take a look at maintenance, and I made a impassioned plea not to cut maintenance projects, but we did look at maintenance support services for $20,000, software for $30,000, that we'll just absorb and buy less software with. The payment, a part of this, is the parking fee at the high school, that actually had bounced around as part of the audit, and some board members had even suggested looking at that. I had resisted that initially, because it doesn't raise the kind of money that the athletic participation fee does, and it's a fair amount of work, and there's some enforcement costs, and I certainly wasn't going to propose pay for participation and the parking fee at once. But with the participation fee off the table, then, a fee for service here, something that's not part of the curriculum, something that's clearly optional, something that was in the audit, is in there for $40,000, at $50 per semester, and no one has to pay it, they can just ride the bus. We did get a couple of teacher retirements in the past week. There is a risk in taking this reduction, because that's the pool of money that we would generally use to fund additional positions that we don't even know we need right now. But, to me, at this point, it's a prudent risk, because there could be some additional retirements between now and the start of the school year. Obviously, if they weren't, we would be in a bind, but I'm comfortable at that, at that number. On the sports front, and certainly we heard loud and clear, as I knew we would, that, obviously, the alternative of cutting sports, cutting freshman sports, or cutting any particular team, was going to be an aberration, although I did hear at the table from some that said that they would rather actually cut sports, rather than put in a pay, a fee. What we did here was, between the two headmasters and the athletic directors, identified $35,000 in costs at each high school, that could be absorbed, that there would be a slight impact at the subvarsity level, no sports would be eliminated, but a couple of games, one home, one away, would be removed, and we would postpone some new uniform purchases and supplying equipment, and that would get us to the $250,000 number. So, obviously, my first choice was the pay to participate, but in lieu of that, I would recommend the ones I just mentioned there, and if you don't want those, then we can talk about the other options on the page, which in my view are even less agreeable, in my view. So, that's my explanation. So this document now, the one dated 5/24, removes the pay to participate that was on, it's all, all the actions on the third page. Now, what you see, for example, if you just want to turn over to the third page, they're not numbered.
Yeah, they are on the bottom.
On the bottom, oh, on the bottom right. If I didn't have my palm over it, I would see it. Line 31 now says teacher retirements for $70,000, that's where that is, and then if you go down, you'll see that the pay to participate fee is not in there. At numbers 39 through 43 represent the additional ones. Everything else on this document is the same as it was originally, and the subtotal is the same. So, that's where we are.
All right. Do board members have any questions about this document? Go ahead, Mrs. Brand.
Just one question relative to the sports at $70,000. Does this adversely affect the membership with the FCAC or CIAC?
These are at the subvarsity level?
Right.
Yes, because they still, yeah.
Right, so the varsity teams, there wouldn't be any impact. So you'd be talking about freshman sports, JV sports, so if you have a 16-game soccer season, you have a 14-game soccer season.
But there's still, there's no impact?
Right.
I saw, Mrs. Dow, then Mr. Liu?
Yeah, I had the same question as Mrs. Brand, I was going to ask it, then, you'd said that athletic directors were involved, so I thought, well, it should be covered, but was going, going to talk about that anyway. The other thing that I just wanted to mention is the high school parking fee. Now, although I am not a proponent of that, in usual circumstances, I do not want to put another fee on top of, yeah, the high schools, schoolers, I guess I just have a problem with charging students or, you know, parents ultimately, with something that has always been free in our, during the course of our history here. However, if the other option is eliminating hockey, freshman sports, and the late buses, then yes, in the spirit of compromise, I would be willing to go along with the new proposal, in lieu of the pay to play. So I will, you know, vote in favor of these, these new ones, I just wanted to say, though, with a caveat, that I'm not, yeah, happy with that one, but I think that's better than having pay to play, because as you said, if someone's driving car to school, chances are, then they can absorb that fee, as opposed to some families really could not maybe absorb in the pay to play. So, I'm happy to see those other options, and glad to, hopefully, the rest of the board will agree with me and have the hockey and the sports and the late buses off the table.
Thank you, Mrs. Dow. Mr. Liu?
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify on the preschool tuition revenue. So that hadn't been included in the last budget adjustment?
Correct.
And so, we haven't upped the fees or anything, it just hadn't been included thus far?
That's right. Right. Because remember, there was no fee set until the last board meeting, so we had not put any figure in for revenue on that.
Okay. Thank you. Mrs. Zahn?
Thank you. I also just, you know, about the high school parking fees, again, while I will support this, my concern comes in for the child who drives to school, because he has to get to work afterwards. So, you know, I hope there's some way, I don't know how we're going to make special accommodations, but I, too, will support this, not thrilled with the high school parking fees, but we'll support it.
Anybody else? Mrs. Iaccone?
No.
Mr. Carey?
My preference is still what the Superintendent originally proposed to us. I think that this is a good set of alternatives, which I am willing ultimately to support. I am concerned, though, that we do start to cut it pretty tight, in terms of buffer here, and I think superintendents may be clear to us that we're going to be doing that. You know, burning up late, last-minute teacher retirements, which are usually funds that we get to utilize to cover, oh, extra kindergarten enrollment, that always takes place over the summer, might leave us in a situation where, you know, we just, we can't kick an extra section out of the school next year, if 20 or 30 extra kids show up over the summer, which is typically the limit. So those are some of the choices we have to make here. You know, maintenance, we already denied $150,000 contingency fund, because there was really no place to, no bucket to put it in, but we have two active construction projects, we're about to start a third at Sherman, and when something goes awry there, other maintenance projects are going to fall off the board, so, you know, I reluctantly support this over the pay to play, which I think would have been my initial preference, in the spirit of moving forward. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything on this? Yes, Mr. Fatt.
I guess, maybe, three quick questions. Do we know the cost that we're saving for the two fewer subvarsity games per season?
Yes.
Could you tell me what that is?
Approximately $15,000.
$15,000, all right.
Total, between the two schools.
Right. The other question is, have we identified yet what software is not going to be purchased for the reduction of $30,000?
I believe that the IT manager has done that, I think, Jack, I think you had some information on that, I think that was, Nancy had identified that, right?
There was one piece that becomes CIF compliant for our-
There you go, the microphone.
There was one piece of software that we required to become CIF compliant for our data warehouse system. If we migrated to the newer form of the data warehouse system, we decided not to migrate to that, so that piece of software was about $25,000, $26,000. So that was one piece that we're not going to purchase, and I don't have, off the top of my head, the other piece of software that we were contemplating not purchasing, but Nancy has it, it worked out.
Just, that purchase will have to be made, but it'll be postponed, till we migrate to a different system.
Right.
Right. Just deferring it, not eliminating it.
And the last question would be, relates to the late buses. Do we know how many students take advantage of the late bus typically, like, each, for those two days that are going to be available, do we know approximately how many people take advantage of that late bus, or students?
It varies by day and by school, and actually, we went back and did that research, and-
Just the ballpark, I mean?
I think it ranges from 10 to 30.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, I think it's a, the reason I'm reluctant to put it on there as a first-order cut, is I think that our middle school kids really do depend on that, and the after-school activities at the middle school are critical to the middle school model, and so, I think we felt that taking the late buses out of there would really diminish participation. So, they do get decent ridership, but we'll have to say that, and also, I will say that the principals are very good about, if very few kids have signed up for them, they will cancel them and not run them if there's only three or four kids on them. So we have that option during the day for that, so.
Thank you. Yes, Mrs. Brand.
I apologize, but for those of you who know me, I'm very famous for thinking out loud or on the spot, and, so my apologies, but have we ever looked, because we have two middle schools and the high school so close, and I understand that there's a difference in timing and when they dismiss, but is it possible to compromise or blend the times so that we can actually use the high school and the middle school? Same with Fairfield Woods and also Fairfield Ward, they're not so far apart. I'm just, I don't know how full they are, and I'm wondering if we, if that's possible to look at that, to see if maybe we can have some cost savings there and still provide a service?
We can look at that, I don't know the answer off the top of my head. I think that the high school late buses under the original budget cut are eliminated, so the question would be, could we provide that service by using a middle school bus? I don't know the answer, we'll have to look into that.
Okay, anybody else? Mrs. Brand, did you want to make an amendment to the motion? I think you were looking to do that.
Before you, you see a document that has proposed cuts for the restoration of world language, which you'll probably find some spelling errors, and hopefully not any math errors in it, since this was tried to put together in as quickly as possible, but as you can see, there's a whole lot of items in it. So I want to have the items, as you see before you, which, I apologize, do not have a total, but the total is $408,008, $408,888, for the grand total of the list, that includes extra clerical, lunch aids, middle school liaisons, and you'll see the final at the end, and various maintenance proposals, Board of Ed Services, and instructional improvement teacher. So I'd like to propose the following cuts in the document as an amendment to the amended proposal that we have on the table.
And so, this, if it was successful, then would replace the world language cut that's on the 5/24/11 document?
Correct.
I need a second.
That's a motion. Does anyone have a second? Mr. Liu? Okay. So, we can discuss the amendment, are there questions on this?
Well-
Well, go ahead, you go first, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. One of the things that I was doing is, I, I thought about a lot of what the public comment had the other night, and there were two themes, one of them was world language, the other was very definitely the pay to play, and if I'm counting correctly, that looks like that may very well be addressed. So, it bothered me, because I know we have a new staffing model for elementary, and when I look at that, I certainly can appreciate the value and the merit of it, and I, I'm not sure, however, how it fits- And I, I'm not sure however, how it fits in to the entire plan. I know Dr. Tidal spoke of a district improvement plan. I think that was a what, but I'm not sure I appreciate the how. And I want to understand that. So I think it would be very helpful if in the future we have the district improvement plan in terms of the steps that we need to get where Dr. Tidal wants us to be and the finances that are associated with that. Because we're going to be doing this give and take. And at this time, I'm looking at world language, which to me is a known, and something I'm not quite sure I fully appreciate what it's going to be doing. And I think that's important. I don't want to risk one for the other. And so I was well aware that it was important. And I, even though I don't appreciate it, so I thought, okay, then let's come up with some kind of compromise. And I looked and considered that Mr. Fattabine had mentioned support staff. I know Mrs. Dow had talked about some maintenance. So Mr. Lou called me with pieces of this. Mrs. Dow called me with pieces of this. This is actually a blend of what people actually either said at the table or were possible considerations. It's just an attempt to try and fill a hole if possible in order to maintain world language, which I think has educational value. And at this particular time, I don't feel that we're in a position, at least I as a board member, don't feel that I want to make that trade. But I know other board members feel that they want to have the additional staffing. So this is a compromise. What I did was, when I looked at some of it, I tried to use actually the same model Dr. Tidal did with the bands. So where you see a drop, I tried to address where staffing is. It places that clearly that we're in that first band. So, and I tried to also make it and support as much as possible. Where you see some other staffing changes, the other, where you see middle school liaisons and you also see an instructional improvement teacher, we are still talking about, as you know, a lot of those get bumped down. And we are talking about six new net for the elementary model. So it's entirely possible that we can have a very blend and actually not have even much of a loss of staff at all when we're doing this, just moving people around and not hiring new. It's, I'm not going to say it's perfect. I'm not. I don't think anything we're going to do is perfect. But it is an attempt, as I said, with a blend of what people were thinking of, to try and keep world language in place. Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Brand. Any questions on this? Yes, Mrs. Albin.
Could I ask through the chair that Mrs. Brand go through the list? Because I'm looking at figures that I'm not able to, I mean, I can, I can look at extra clerical and the first item under Burr for $282, but I don't have an explanation for that dollar amount. Could I ask that Mrs. Brand go through the document and explain them so that we might understand them? And then I would ask, again through the chair, that Dr. Tidal could perhaps respond to them also? That, that just may help the rest of us sitting here at the table to understand the impact of these.
Sure.
Thank you.
Quite honestly, I tried to do the least harm as much as possible going through this. So I was looking at what you see before you with extracurricular. If you look in our budget book, all the secretaries are listed and have an assignment to every building. In addition to that, when you look at a separate page, you will find that there is an $11,220. I'm sorry? I'm not answering your question.
Could I ask if it's curricular or extracurricular or extra clerical? Just so that everyone...
Clerical. Extra clerical. I can't, I don't have my glasses. Is that what it says? I hope it does.
It says clerical.
Oh, I beg your pardon. I'm sorry. And what I did was, I felt that I was trying to do the same thing and line up as much as possible. So what I, you'll see an extra support, which I believe is like 19 hours, and that's $11,220. And then there's a smaller stipend that you'll see with the smaller numbers. So you'll look at the clerical and, actually, I don't think I have it in here. Or did I? I apologize. I have to wear my glasses. I can't even read what I wrote. The first part you're going to see, that's all the extra clerical. And most of these buildings already have two. What you see below it, I think lunch aids is self-explanatory. We'll see middle school liaisons. It's my understanding that primarily the role for the middle school liaisons is they report to the principal on a weekly basis or as needed, and they are the coordinators for making the appointments for the PPTs. And maintenance, if Mrs. Dow wants to speak to that, that's hers. Mr. Lou actually recommended and made some proposals as well. That was middle school, but I happened to just answering it because I'm here. Obviously, our Board of Ed Services are something that I put forward. I know Mr. Lou mentioned it as well because we just thought, you know what? We're trying to contribute to the spirit of this. And with instructional improvement teachers, again, that it, it has become, it's my understanding that these are more administrative as opposed to instructional. And we are going in that direction, improving in instruction. So, and that is actually the school with the lowest enrollment as well. So if that helps you, certainly. You know, Dr. Tidal is going to be able to speak and answer this far better than I, but I just at least can give you my thoughts.
All right. So, all right, why don't...
Want me to respond?
Let's, Dr., timeout. Hang on. Let's have Dr. Tidal, and then I'll go to you, Mr. Carey, if you have a questions. I have some questions too.
Right. And I have, I may want to call on a couple people to talk through some of these who have more direct knowledge than I do.
What they do.
First of all, the extra clerical is something the principals, the elementary, it's a very small number here. So it's something the elementary principals, they take it out of their allocation because they need to bring their regular secretary in, usually over the summer to help with registration. You know, our secretaries are, elementary secretaries are not 12-month employees. So I think the elementary principals would, if any of them are here and want to speak to that, it's such a small dollar amount, I don't want to spend a lot of time on it. The lunch aids, you know, if we don't have those positions and those are eliminated, my hunch is that what we'll have to do is people who are, say, paraprofessionals or others would have to provide that service, which means they're not servicing kids. So lunch aids are, in my view, an inexpensive way to provide supervision in the lunchroom while allowing the paraprofessionals and other support staff to actually work directly with kids. But I would invite anybody, maybe Anna can speak to that one in a second, on the lunch aids. Middle school liaisons, I'm going to have first middle school principal I see, Greg, and talk to that. Those are, in other places, known as team leaders. You know, we have a team concept in the middle school, and I think Greg can do a pretty good job off the top of his head describing their role. I think it's more substantial than you maybe believe.
Can I...
Perhaps I missed something, but I thought, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page here.
Yep.
With the lunch aids.
Yep.
I think there were several schools that don't have lunch aids. Just see, there's a notation about that.
Right, yes, some don't have it.
Right. And it was actually because of the size of some of those that I thought it was something that was doable.
All the maintenance cuts, and if we want to go through those, you know, I'm sure Tom would love to talk at great length about them. But my general comment about maintenance cuts is the same comment I made how many times, that we need every dollar in maintenance projects. There are too many unknowns. It's possible that some of these might not get done because the money will end up getting spent on some of the items Mr. Carey mentioned or some other things that I've talked about before. So I'm just really reluctant to endorse any cuts in maintenance projects because it's an area that we've cut a lot. It's a serious issue. We get a lot of unknown things happen. The RTM has not funded our projects. So we've got a risky boiler at Dwight that could go at any time, and there's no money in the budget to deal with that. And I don't, the instructional improvement teacher at Dwight, I'm going to have Anna talk about what they do. But in our model, you know, the three smallest schools are all very close to the same size, the Holland Hill, Jennings, and Dwight. They're all within a few kids of one another. So singling out Dwight for removal of this would seem to be a bit uncomfortable for me. So why don't we start with Anna? And then Greg, if you can come up and just, again, we got these relatively recently, and it's not a criticism, I just normally handle it myself, but I just thought, point of clarification, that's all.
Thank you. I think I'll start with the elementary cuts that are proposed for extra clerical. Typically, in the middle of the summer, first or second week of August, elementary parents are used to receiving a placement letter. Those letters don't go out by principals. Secretaries are usually brought in for a day or two to develop the mailings. Secretaries at elementary level do not work throughout the summer. So we would definitely have an impact if the clerical, extra help in the clerical field were to be cut, there would be an impact on the type of mailings that would go out to parents throughout the summer.
So why don't you just, that's, that's fine, your answer. But so what do Sherman and Mill Hill do? Because they apparently don't have that. Do you have any idea?
I see that Mill Hill does have that when I checked page 46.
Maybe we just missed it. Okay. What about Sherman? They have it?
I don't see as a line item. I'm going to have to ask Ms. Roxby on how that's handled.
Okay.
Okay? All right.
Sure. On that, go ahead, Mr. Lou.
And I know this would be an imposition for the principals to do it, but could they?
Mr. Lou, I'd rather have principals focusing on instructional matters of the building, their planning for school improvement plans, their writing goals, their reviewing student achievement results. This is placement letters, clerical, stamping, envelopes, so...
Don't misunderstand me. I do too.
It could be a could.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Lunch aids? Actually, lunch aids is a decision made by the school. As you know, each school's given a school allocation per student. So depending on the number of students you have, multiplied by X amount of dollars, a school is given dollars to prioritize how to spend based on their school improvement goals, material needs, resource needs. So based on that allocation, each principal decides on whether they're going to hire lunch aids and how many, depending on the structure and system they have in their lunchroom. And some principals though choose also to take, to use the principal, the IIT, the MRT, LAC, paraprofessionals, whomever, in a different scheduling format to cover lunch. And that's why you'll see that some schools, such as Sherman, Mill Hill, Burr, and Dwight, don't hire lunch aids. But in essence, if you make this cut, what you're doing is cutting the school allocation for seven schools. So you're saying to seven schools who have made a decision to prioritize lunch aids, that your school allocation will now be less than all the other schools. So each school makes a decision. So Holland Hill, Mr. Arnon, with his team, has made the decision that they prioritize lunch aids based on the pocket of money that we say you should spend for your school. So if we as a system now are saying to Holland Hill, we're going to take the $8,900 away, we've just cut their school allocation by $8,900 where we did not, let's say, for Sherman. So that is a by-school decision that is made, hence cutting the school allocation. And then finally, the instructional improvement teacher. I feel exceptionally uncomfortable with this decision for many, many reasons. One being that we spent a lot of time this year developing an elementary staffing model that's based on bands. So then we don't pick any schools off anymore. Last year, we heard loud and clear from Board of Education, you'd like us to develop a system to allocate resources in a more equitable and fair manner. So we did so with the elementary staffing model, understanding that school populations fall in three bands. So each band would be considered to be provided for certain resources. Dwight is part of a band that includes Jennings and Holland Hill. If we now already at the onset of a new model start picking schools off, I feel like we're going back to inequity and unfairness. Just as much as we wouldn't pick Dwight off, I wouldn't want us to pick off Osborne Hill for being the largest. So that's one of the biggest reasons. Two, instructional improvement teachers serve a purpose instructionally. If you don't know already, they work with students directly. They provide direct intervention services and in some cases, where available, enrichment services. If we're going to intervene through SRBI, we need someone to coordinate all those services. There are some students that receive multiple services and some schools that provide services to many, many, many schools. Anywhere from 30 to 50% of students receive intervention services. So I feel like we would be picking on Dwight because they're the smallest and saying that you don't need that intervention or instructional support by making this cut. So I would not be in favor of supporting that, but it's your decision.
Yes, Mrs. Brand.
What I did when writing this, and I can certainly appreciate what Ms. Leonard is saying, I was very specific because, including giving page numbers so people would appreciate where and how we got here. What I would not do, and because what I'm talking about is, if we have extra clerical or we have lunch aids, to me, that's a pool of funds that goes to the district. I'm being specific because there were places that I felt some of the elementaries were able to do without. And to me, that's where we are. We're trying to figure out what we can do without. And that was my premise with this. It is not intended to be, and I know I said it with emotion to do it, I understand, but I would not want to presume to do the assignments. That's, that was not my intention whatsoever. Including when we're talking about an instructional improvement teacher, although it's cited specifically, and I mentioned it for a site, I do not think that as administrators, someone would say, okay, it's specifically this site, we can't take them out, they're, they're on lockdown. It's, this is an attempt to try and take A amount of money and remove it. And I put it specifically as much as possible so they will understand the genesis of all of this. But do I think these are the ways, because people are going to ask you, how did you get there? This is how I got there. Now, do I intend for it to be this highly specific? And do I think there's some discretion that will be there? Absolutely. But I do think we had instances here that we could see that things could be done better and without, and that was what the intention of this, because we're in a hard place. So I will, do want to clarify that. And if we, if the board would prefer, we can actually do a total. And then the total would represent the total deduction within that category to be handled as they see fit.
Now, does anybody have any questions on this elementary school? I had Mr. Carey, then Mrs. Albin, then Mr. Fattabine.
Just, let's continue, Leonard, through the chair. To Ms. Leonard. Two things you mentioned. One, you mentioned was the lunch aids are part of the allocation program, and that's a choice being made by the building unit principals. What are some of the other types of things that the unit heads will choose to use that money for?
So principals make decisions for how much money will be spent for library books? How much money will be spent on copy paper? How much money will be spent on, set aside for field trips to supplement some field trips that they may need to? So the list varies, and it is spelled out in your budget book, I believe.
Okay. And can you just tell me roughly, I know it's going to vary from school to school, but how many staff do principals have under their supervision? Basically, how many direct reports does a principal have in an elementary building on average?
We have a principal in the audience. 50 to 70, would that be correct, at the elementary? And I'm seeing thumbs going upward. So they are responsible for all certified, non-certified staff.
I can help with the more specific on that in the budget book. Beginning on page 151, there's staffing by school department. And so, for example, at Burr, it's 56.9, Dwight, 49.6, solid, you know, and so forth down the road.
Thank you.
So we actually have it all specified there.
I recall at one point last year, getting up to as high as 84 at one building, if I recall, I think at McKinley.
Osborne Hill would be the max at the elementary level. That's in the mid 60s. But you get up higher when you get into the middle schools.
Osborne and McKinley, yeah.
Yeah, your middle school. And McKinley is 69.
That's certified. Then we...
Yes.
That's FTE. We may have apartheid people, but maybe more than that FTE.
Right. Good, that's a good point.
Comes to the bodies that we supervise.
Right.
Supposed to that 70.
Oh, good. Thank you, Paul. That's certified and non-certified, but that is an FTE count. That's a good point. So, but anyway, if you, more specific information, it's in the book.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mrs. Albin and Mr. Fattabine.
I'm recalling things from the early 90s. Thank you, Mrs. Brown. I'm recalling things from the early nineties. Thank you, Mrs. Brand, for the attempt, because if, if it's possible to find ways to restore funds to other accounts, I'm sure everyone here would like to try to do so. The lunch aids, I would not support, because it, I recall going back to the early nineties, when we had been going through significant budget problems, and we did not have these people in the district to do this work. I was one of the volunteer parents running the lunchroom, along with a lot of other volunteer parents. We used to never have field trips driven by buses, and when I had a kindergartner, I said, "Are you kidding me? The liability, the liability, the liability." And in a couple of years, field trips were driven by bus drivers, and there were paid aides in the lunchroom. I, I wouldn't go here. You know, I remember that history, and it's, it's not a good one. So I, we ran recess also. So anyway, I wouldn't go there. I, I don't think I would support, it's a small cut, I wouldn't support the, the extra clerical at, at the elementary level. I think that people need to do what they do best, and the principals need to be doing what they're supposed to be doing, and, and not that. I'll be interested to hear on some of the other items. I'm thinking that if Dr. Title thinks we can take a small reduction in the Board of Ed Services line, we could just take it and give it as the buffer, but I'm not sure what else here I would be able to support.
Mr. Fattaby, you have some questions?
Just a real quick question about the lunch aids and the school allocations. I understand the school allocations, and I understand that each school's given some discretionary monies to allocate as they wish. So I just want to make certain that that is not another line item in this budget, and that the decisions on where that money's allocated have already been made in this budget, and that's where the administrators of the school decided to place it. Is that, is that accurate?
All of that is represented in the budget book, yes.
All right, so, okay, I just wanted to make that clear.
It's there.
All right. Any, any other questions about this elementary school? Anybody? All right. Mr. Hatsis, you want to come on up and talk about the middle school items on this?
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. The, you know, I know you're all familiar with the importance of the team structure at the middle school, and what the benefits are for the children. The team liaison really does serve as each individual team's leader. And with any organization, you're gonna need, you know, an effective way to disseminate information, to have opportunities for parents to contact the teachers. I mean, it, sure, it's easy for any individual parent to send an email to an individual teacher, but what ends up happening sometimes is that if, you know, unless you have a central person that is a collector of that information, and shares that information with, with the other teachers on the team, you know, there might be one teacher that knows one thing, another teacher that knows another, and that's not aware of certain things. So number one, it's, it's a major tool for communication with parents. The team liaison is the one who sets up all team, all meetings with parents, whether it's at the formal conferences time, and as you know, the middle school only has one conference set of dates versus the two that the elementaries have. That's because we, we, we accept and have parent meetings throughout the whole year, and that liaison is really the, the sole person who, who organizes those meetings. They're the main contact and connection with the administration, you know, that's the idea of the liaison. We have one faculty meeting a month, but there are several times during the course of the month where, you know, I will call the liaisons together to talk about certain programs that we need to work on, information that I'll need, you know. It's the end of the year now, we're doing, we're assigning awards to our eighth graders. It's liaisons that coordinate that work with their team members to make sure, you know, to, to assign which awards the kids are gonna get. They serve as our School Improvement Committee, they serve as our Professional Development Committee. I mean, they serve multiple roles, and they are, you know, a fast, easy resource for me, you know, as a principal, to be able to call them together, to, to, to get done a number of important things, rather than bothering the entire faculty, because they'll go back to their teams, they share the information, they get the information, they bring it back. It's efficient, it's effective, it helps kids, it's very effective for parents as well. So that's, in a nutshell, what the team liaison's all about.
All right, any, any questions on that from board? Yes, Mrs. Brand.
Yeah, going back with, with what Mr. Hatsis just described, was when actually the middle schools were just terribly overloaded, and that position, if I'm not mistaken, was held by a teacher, and that was the point person, because I remember going into the meetings, and we had, the liaison was for that team, and that was the person that was our contact person. So we weren't emailing and contacting everyone, but it was a faculty member, unless I got that wrong. So it was done differently in the past, correct?
Yeah, that's, you know, the process as, as we do now. I mean, we, we try to, I mean, sometimes there are, oh, it's the same as what you just said, yes. I mean, we're a single, we try to focus all parent contacts to a single member, the team leader, the liaison, so that they can set up the meetings, and it's not multiple people trying to, you know, to handle that situation. Yeah, the teacher that gets the stipend, right?
Thirty-eight, but I'm, a thirty-eight thousand dollar?
Yeah, there's, there's one per team. There's, there's one liaison for every team in the building.
Because when I asked, actually, what, the answer I got was, was different from this, that it was actually a, a single faculty member, independent.
No, there's one on every team, in each of the middle schools.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else on this item, board members? Okay, thank you. All right. Does anyone have any other questions on this document? Anybody? Questions, comments, whatever you want to, go ahead, Mr. Fattaby.
I guess, a question and a comment. The question is, in Dr. Title's opinion, whether or not these proposed amendments to the budget adjustments would be more detrimental to education than the reduction services to world language?
Yes.
Okay. The next is sort of a statement. I'm, in essence, concerned about that, as well as also concerned about the reduction in maintenance, which is a substantial number, it's a hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars in reduction in maintenance. I, I think that may be problematic, and, and a little concerned about that, such a large number being reduced maintenance. So those are my basic question and comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lu, I think you had a comment or question.
I, I just want to, I, I know this is, this is not by perf, far by perfect, and, but I don't think any of them is. I mean, we're, we're dealing with a two-point-eight million dollars in cuts, which means, at some point, everybody makes some sacrifices, and yes, there are different points of views here. But I think what I heard the other night, and what I've been hearing via email, is there is a huge amount of people in the community who feel very strongly about world language, and even before that, I feel strongly about it. It's not to say that this is perfect, or that these won't have its impact, but it, it's hard for me to say, well, just because it's a small number, let's not deal with it. It's about all these small numbers that add up, so that we could try to, to make a difference, and keep a program that's going to affect, I think, education. And if that means sometimes that principals or teachers are gonna have to do a little extra this time, this is the shared sacrifice that we make when we're doing cuts. That's just my point of view on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lu. Yes, Mrs. Dow.
I was just going to say something similar to Mr. Lu. I mean, none of these are ideal. Obviously, they all have, we have a need for all of them, or they wouldn't be there in the first place. But given, taking things like this away, or taking away the world language, I just think the world language is so vital. The younger, the kids get the foreign language, we, we know that, that it's been proved that it's better. And I just, like I said, although they're not ideal, and, and depending on who you are, obviously, you could have an argument for each one of these, that's why they wouldn't be the ideal cut, but some, something does have to be cut, and I think it needs to be somewhere other than one of our programs for the children, a learning program.
Thank you, Mrs. Dow. Yes, Mrs. Iacono.
I just wanted to say thank you for all the homework that you did, because clearly you spent a lot of time on this, and a lot of effort. And I know, I think it's just testament to how much each and every member cares about the budget, and the programs, and everything that we offer. I do just want to remind everyone that we're not eliminating world language, we're not losing the program. Unfortunately, it's a reduction in the program that none of us are happy about, or happy to have to do, but it's the reality of where we are. And given the two evils, as I've written to many people that have been writing to me, I'd rather have a reduction in a program than losing out on some other things completely. And if that means that I have to reduce world language, so that I can keep a key coordinator at the middle school level, then that's where I am. I am not in favor of all at cutting anything to maintenance. I've been following this, these maintenance projects at so many levels, at every single meeting throughout this entire year. It's been an extremely excruciating process, and I just don't think we can afford to go there at all. I, I would, in a different time, in a different age, I would say, "Let's push it off," but we can't. We've pushed it as far as we can push it. I'm, we have worked so hard at this board to communicate things in terms of restructuring, and what we're looking for in terms of equity at the elementary school. I want to commend Mrs. Kattia Leonard for hearing our voices loud and clear on that, and working to develop the banding. And I, I wouldn't be able to support undoing that banding by getting rid of the instructional improvement teacher. But I do appreciate the thought and effort that went into this. I know it was heartfelt, I know a lot of time was spent on it, and, and I do appreciate it. I just, unfortunately, like everything else, it's not a viable alternative. And they're all evils, but we, we've got to pick our poison, and I picked to reduce the, to reduce the program, rather than lose it, and lose other things in its place. So that's where I am. I, I will not vote in favor of this amendment.
Mrs. Albin.
As this process has gone forward, I've listened very carefully to the members of this body, and the members of the public. And also, it has caused me to remember things that I have heard in the past by educators here in Fairfield and elsewhere. And one of those very important things I heard quite some time ago, Mrs. Zahn may recall it, if she'll remember the educator, "Education has to move on the spectrum. And as it improves in, and, and new things come, we have to evaluate what we're doing." And I'm hoping that with the changes that we're going to see in world language, that, and I anticipate that it will be evaluated, probably revamped, and I'm also hopeful that we may find that in this new structure that it will have, students will not be losing, and, and in fact, will be gaining in other areas of their curriculum. I'm a, a firm believer that we need to be teaching English skills first and foremost. I believe in world language, I had it from the third grade on, but I know how critical the English component is to world language. And it's my hope that with the new model and the new structure, that students are going to have increased instruction in those areas, which I know that eventually and later on, will really aid them in, in their study of world language. So I'm, I'm not as concerned about the hours, I'm concerned about the total quality of the program. So I just offer that as something to think about. Thank you.
Does anybody else, Mrs. Zahn?
Thank you. I, I too want to thank you for presenting this document, because I would do close to anything to restore the foreign language to where it is as well. You know, I, I agree, the extra clerical help, you know, these are times when, you know, I hate to say, but unfortunately, everybody needs to pitch in and put stamps on envelopes and, and stuff, stuff them. But, you know, when Ms. Kattia Leonard did discuss how, you know, the lunch aids came from the pool of money allocated to student, and not, you know, you would be taking that away from each school, and not, and, you know, because the principal decided to use that money for lunch aids, and not something else, that, you know, we might appreciate more, you know, we can't, at least I can't vote to take that away from that principal's right to do. So unfortunately, I can't vote for this amendment as a whole either, but thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mrs. Brand, I, I appreciate this also. Now, we're gonna have public comment on this amendment, and this amendment only. Does anyone want to comment on the amendment offered by Mrs. Brand? No. Okay, seeing none, are we ready to vote on the amendment? Come on up. Yeah, right over there, identify yourself, your name and your address, for the record.
My name, my name is Bill Dunn, and I go, live at two oh five Tucker Lane, Osborne Hill School. My daughter Julie goes to Osborne Hill School, she's in first grade. And my concern with the, the lunch aids is, she's allergic to peanuts, and I'm afraid that, that not having extra supervision in the lunchroom might be very dangerous, but that's all I want to say.
Thank you. Any other public comment on the amendment, the amendment only? All right, seeing none, are we ready to vote? Is there any other comment amongst board members on this? Okay, so all in favor of the amendment? I have Mr. Lu, Mrs. Brand, Mrs. Dow, all opposed. Mr. Fattaby, Mr. Carey, Mrs. Albin, Ms. Iacono, myself, and Mrs. Zahn. Okay, thank you. And now we're back to the main motion. Is there any other further discussion on the main motion? Yes, Mr. Lu?
I would like to make another amendment. I would like to make an amendment that we take three hundred and forty-two thousand dollars that is being allocated towards grandfathering and use it towards world language. May I have a second?
Do we have a second, Mrs. Brand? Now, let me ask you a question here.
Yeah, let me, let me just-
Doing the math here, does, does, does that cover the world language cut?
No, it doesn't exactly, but I, it's a, you know, it's off by about, what, thirty thousand? And I'm sure we can find it. And if we can't, we can at least put the bulk of it towards it, and make it not such a deeper cut, deep cut. I would just like to say that, again, when the, all of the public voted for the grandfathering, there wasn't really an alternative. It was about grandfathering. And of course, if I was a, well, I am a parent, I, I would sign my kids up for grandfathering too. But now, we're in a different situation. We're at, facing a two-point-eight million dollar cut, we're facing programs being reduced, and I think it's time to reevaluate. To me, this is a no-brainer. This one is a lot of money that I think is far better used towards program, and I think is gonna have direct impact, as some of board members and administration have said, to getting our kids a better education. So I would like to offer that amendment.
And it's been seconded by Mrs. Brand. Any discussion on this amendment? Go ahead, Mrs. Albin.
I'll just comment that the grandfathering isn't simply allowing children to stay in schools that they're currently attending, but it is aiding in the construction at Fairfield Woods. That site probably can't handle the population during construction. We've heard that over, over and over again. And, and it's my understanding as well, that the administration has completed all the work in making this transition, and I wouldn't undo that.
Anybody else, hang on, Mr. Lu, we'll get to you. Anybody else on this? Mr. Carey, then Mr. Fattaby, then Mrs. Zahn, then back to you, Mr. Lu.
So, putting aside for a second, the practicality of asking the administration to undo everything they've done to get us to this point, and with thirty days left in the school year. I think that alone would be enough for me to, to not support this, this motion. There was an educational reason that, at least I voted for grandfathering for. And it had to do with disproportionately affecting two grades worth of students, about twelve-hundred kids. As a result of this redistricting, which is necessary, because we need to make more space, and there was only one school that we had room to make more space at. We were told explicitly by our staff that- We were told explicitly by our staff that multiple transitions for students in this age range, i.e. being in one school in fifth grade, another school in sixth grade, another school in seventh grade, is potentially detrimental to their education. And it's not just a matter of socialization with their friends. It's not a matter of familiarity with the building. More importantly, it's a matter of familiarity with their faculty and their faculty's familiarity with them. So in other words, if you are a teacher of a seventh grader who's having trouble comprehending something, you can ask that student's sixth grade teacher what's going on in the faculty lounge at lunchtime. We lose that when we lose that connectivity and we move the kids out of the building. It's one of the reasons that the State Department of Education in Connecticut actually tracks transients in schools as one of the metrics they're looking at, because that connectivity is very important. Now, is every student going to be negatively impacted? Of course not, but I'd be very concerned about making that choice of disproportionately impacting those students, especially now after the expectation's been set that that wasn't going to happen. So I can't support this motion.
I'm on. Mr. Fattabey?
While I certainly believe it would have been better to have some, a better plan so that busing associated with redistricting wouldn't be necessary, I think at this point in time, it would be, to change that plan now would likely be more detrimental than it would be to do it. So I don't think I can support this motion. Thank you.
Mrs. Zahn?
Thank you. I also agree that, you know, possibly when we talk about redistricting, if it ever comes up again in our lifetimes, we would, I would definitely opt for parents to bring their kids and us not supporting transportation. It's unfortunate, and again, it's a great number to bring back foreign language, which, you know, I would support, but I think the amount of time we have to ask the parents if they would still consider even the grandfathering because they're not getting the busing at this time, wouldn't help the school district, the staff, and the schools that it affects at this time. So unfortunately, I could not vote for this at this time either, but thank you.
Mrs. Brand?
I actually am familiar with the material that Mr. Carey's talking about. I do see this as a different piece because we're not isolating students the way we would if they're moving from place to place as when they're transient. This is a large block of students that it affects. And I also looked at the numbers because we had the projections and then factored in and estimated what actually would be at Fairfield Woods. And fortunately, the project is going well, and we are going to be facing another issue which will hit us in the fall, and that's going to be how we're going to fit the additional buses on those locations, because you'll have your regular complement of buses, and you're going to have then another complement full trying to figure out where they're going to go. I think we all know and have seen, quite honestly, where this is going to fall and where the vote's going to go, but I think it's very important because I want people to think about this. We are making a choice, and is, the choice is about a curriculum piece that was lost, took 23 years to get back, and we're choosing to do this rather than busing. And we could offer no busing and give people that option, or take it and just move them as a bulk. My personal preference, quite frankly, I do think they would adjust. I do think they'd be okay. And what I'm trying to do is, again, in the same spirit that people are looking at the redistricting and this busing issue, educationally, I think that's how much I believe in the foreign language program and how much, and how valuable I think it is as well. Now, people may not share that. I can see that Dr. Title doesn't, but I do. I do think it's very valuable, and I don't want to lose this because I, even if we need, as Mrs. Albin said, to reevaluate the world language program, and I think we need to reevaluate a lot of things we do, a lot of programs that we've put in, I don't know if we have an evaluation process to figure out whether they did what we intended. So I think we should, moving forward, whatever we're doing, we certainly should have the criteria and how we're going to evaluate them. We know that what redistricting does, we know what the busing does, but I don't know what we're going to be able to do and how we're going to be able to compensate for the decrease in world language. And I, it's just, as far as I'm concerned, it wasn't a sacrifice I wanted to make. So I wanted to explain though, I am aware of what you're speaking to, but my sense was in the bulk that we're doing it wouldn't have that impact.
Mrs. Dow, then Mr. Lou.
Yeah, just one quick comment. Yeah, I normally would not consider this, but when it's this versus, again, losing our foreign language program, I know someone said, yes, we're not losing it all, we're just cutting it down, but then there's always a point where you start chipping away and then chipping away, and we know we're going to have further budget years that are not good, and, you know, you don't want to, I don't want to lose the program. So it's, I'm only considering it because of the positive of getting back the full world language program.
Thank you. Mr. Lou, do you have anything else?
Through the chair to Dr. Title, could we offer that to parents, that they could, you know, do the grandfathering, but they'd have to bring their own kids to school?
Oh, yeah, you could offer that. I think at this point, I think this would be chaos. I'd just be perfectly blunt about it. We'd have to survey all the parents in the next 30 days, figure out who wants to come, who doesn't want to come. All our staffing is set up for this. Depending on what they pick, redoing teams, schedules, we've transitioned all these children, both as a whole group and for individual students, on top of the fact that if we think the transportation is going to be bad with a couple extra buses going to, say, Tomlinson, the thought of 200 parents trying to drop their kids off at Tomlinson who have chosen grandfathering, they'll be backed up into the train station. I mean, it will be.
Well, it might not be everybody.
Right. I mean, so I think that, I think it would be very difficult to implement well. I think it would undo a lot of their transitions. I think it would cause a lot of issues. And I share the same sentiments as the rest of the board about putting forward a program cut of basically 50% of world language. So I feel in the pain of doing this. This is not really what I want to do, but the alternatives are worse, and I believe there are educational reasons, educational benefits to a large number of children with the grandfathering and with the transportation associated with it. So I don't think it's a question of buses versus world language. I'm not sure that's the real choice. I think it's the educational benefit of kids remaining in the school for two more years and the commitments we've made to parents to do that that bother me. So I think it would be really, really hard to pull off well, I guess. Those are my concerns with it.
Anybody else on this issue? Yes, Mr. Carey.
Thank you, Dr. Title. You just made my point for me. I've heard this argument, and I've received emails on this argument from a handful of parents. I don't think the issue is buses versus program. The issue is educational stability for 1,200 students at the middle school level versus the program. And that's how I would prefer to frame it. That's definitely how I view this particular, this issue. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so we have an amendment on the table to cut $342,000, which represents grandfathering costs for next year. Any comment, public comment on the amendment? Okay, I don't see any, so is the board ready to vote on this amendment? Any other further discussion? Okay, all in favor? I have Mr. Lou, Mrs. Brand, Mrs. Dow opposed. Mr. Fattabey, Mr. Carey, Mrs. Albin, Ms. Iacono, myself, and Mrs. Zahn. Okay, now we're back to the main motion. Any further discussion on the main motion? Yes, Mr. Fattabey?
Real quick. This was a difficult thing to do, obviously. One of the things I don't like about these adjustments is the reduction of the two games for the junior varsity or non-varsity sports. I think it's going to be difficult to put a schedule together, and it's not fair to the other schools, in a sense as well, who they were going to play, where they're not, you know, they're not going to have the Fairfield to play. The other thing I'd like to sort of in general address is that we had to cut a lot of things out of this program we didn't want to cut out. In putting a budget together next year, there may be the possibility and perhaps the likelihood that further budget implications will arise, and we may have to think how we're going to live with less appropriated funds. So I think we're going to have to start really considering either some sort of hiring freeze or some other way in which to reduce the overall cost of wages and benefits, because it seems to be that you can only cut things other than wages and benefit for so long before you really impact the delivery of the education that you want to provide. And I think we're at the point where there's really not a lot of areas to go on that side. So I just want to raise that as an issue and perhaps start earlier on in the budgetary process to try and perhaps get whatever concessions we may be able to get or to have a new initiative in trying to reach some agreements in those areas so we don't have to face this again next year and discuss things worse than reducing the services of world language. Thank you.
You want me to respond to that? Okay. All right. Go ahead, Mrs. Brand. I saw you first, then Mr. Carey.
Okay, with that same thing in mind, is it possible when we look forward, perhaps in the fall, that we have a presentation? I know you've talked and you've talked about your district improvement plan, but I want to see the components of it and how it plays out and the costs, because as I said, I want to figure out what we're going to try and exchange. Mrs. Albin said, you know, we're taking, cutting here. We could be facing the same place, so it's better if we start out trying to figure out how we can fit it all in, and I think then we'd have a better appreciation of where we're going.
That's a good lead-in. Thank you. The, actually, get a preview of some coming attractions at the June board meeting. In fact, the curriculum committee will see this at the June first meeting. We're going to be revamping the way we do our curriculum renewal process and turn it more into a program renewal process, program evaluation and renewal process. One of the things you've seen over this year in terms of curriculum revision is it's been coming out sort of in drips and drabs, for lack of a better way to describe it, course by course, and this is part of a correction process. I'm not, it's not a criticism, but we're now at the point where we can actually and should start to look at programs, at least at the secondary level or the elementary or ideally at the K-12, sometimes it's hard to do. And so that ongoing, and if we do this in a cycle, that you'll end up with ongoing program evaluation slash curriculum development simultaneously, and you can look at the whole picture, and that's where we can answer questions like, well, we want to add these courses because they're necessary, and we have looked at our program and these courses can go by the wayside, right? So rather than looking at course by course, you can look at the whole program. Now, you can't really do that in all 14 program areas at once. I mean, the system can't handle that, but we're going to put in place a way to do it. And the other good thing about doing it that way is it gets to the part in the district improvement strategy about alignment. We talked about articulation between levels, between fifth and sixth, and sixth and seventh, and if all you're looking at are three high school courses, then you haven't necessarily addressed the alignment issues of the kids' preparations to take those courses, right? So I think that, so that's a preview of coming attractions. And at the same time, I have a few other things to put on the table with respect to the improvement plan. And by the way, none of these things necessarily cost extra money, because really, we need to look at changes that maybe are just different ways of using the resources that we do have. So it may not be a change in our program evaluation, program improvement budget line. We just may use it differently, because again, I think that's what people are asking us to do. So I think there's a more effective way to do that in a more comprehensive way than we have. We went from having, you know, little to no curriculum and inch our way forward to the point where now we have a written curriculum for a lot of our courses, but I think we can look at it in a bigger way. So that is, that is something we were going to start to move on next year. And again, not necessarily every improvement initiative means more dollars. That's my little signal.
You had something on that, Mrs. Brand?
Yeah, two things. One, do we have, because it was part of the budget proposal at large, so we really didn't spend a lot of time talking about with the bands, do we have an evaluation or criteria that we're going to, by which we're going to evaluate this new staffing model? And then the other thing, if I've hit you with two and.
We will do that. I'm not sure if we have it all set up. It's also a multi-year strategy, one of the things you saw. And also, we've got to be careful. You put something in, you evaluate it too soon, it's not really good practice in terms of program evaluation. You really need to have something work for a minimum of a year, sometimes even two years, to assess its effectiveness. Often in education, we make that mistake. We implement something, you know, and six months later, we say, ah, see, there was no improvement here, so throw it out, start something new. We never get a chance to take root. It's like planting a seed and watering it, and if you don't have a full-blown tree at the end of two days, you say, well, throw that seed out, try a different one. So I think we have to give it some time, but I think we do have to come up with a good, solid way to evaluate our progress and our progress in terms of, does it have a positive impact on student achievement? To me, that's the metric. So I think we will do that, but I think to expect that, you know, in the fall, for example, when it's only been in place for a short period of time, would probably be premature. So it's, you know, I have to say, in general, school systems, particularly small school systems, because Connecticut is full of lots of small school systems, don't do a ton of program, real serious program evaluation. It's just something generally that's difficult to do. You don't have the resources, and so you have to do it over time. We do have one group that we belong to that can be very helpful with this, and we haven't picked the area yet, so Dr. Rosado and I have been talking about this, you know, we belong to this tri-state consortium, which is a group of high-performing school districts in New Jersey, New York, and Connecticut, right, Carey? The tri-state, right? And, you know, it's the Scarsdales and the Greenwich and the whole nine yards, and every so often, we're able to get a program evaluation from the group for no charge, part of our fee. And so we're due for one. So, you know, we certainly can really get the ball rolling. That's a resource that's relatively cost-effective for us that we could use to do a program evaluation without having to go hire a third party or just use our own internal resources.
And the other thing was, I think there was some conversation, but you mentioned something, and it brought to mind something that was done here in the district a while back, and that is with your organization in central office, years ago, we had, quite frankly, a music teacher who was really doing the operations and the business portion of what was going on in the district. And I don't know if you've looked at that kind of approach in terms of looking at any potential changes, where, again, you might just be able to do more with less just by reorganizing it. So, you know, it's just something that, and it doesn't necessarily mean your head count changes.
I understand.
Yeah, okay.
And I think something I looked at and talked to the board about in the beginning of my tenure here was taking a look at exactly that, you know, in the system, and then we got some good input from the audit on that, quite frankly, about where we are. So that's going to be a continuous improvement process in terms of aligning our services from the central office so that they are supportive of the district's improvement plan and supportive of the school improvement plans in the schools. The central office should be, in addition to many other functions we serve, you know, we're here to serve the schools, not the other way around. And that's kind of where I am with it, and we're going to keep turning ourselves into that as we move forward.
Mrs. Albin, you had something?
Just before we vote on this, I would like to just share my thoughts on this budget process this year. It has been the hardest year that I have sat at this table and worked on a budget in these past 12 budgets I've worked on. And from the audience on budgets before, frankly, this is harder than in those early 90s when money was tight. And I hope that the people who have a responsibility to funding for the town recognize how deep we are digging into the business of these schools this year. And there is not anywhere else to dig. So I would hope that moving into the next budget cycle next year, knowing that the superintendent and the administrative team are going to be looking at program, evaluating, looking at staff, we will be negotiating contracts later this summer, and yes, we will be looking at new ways to do things too. I just hope that the. I just hope that the funding bodies next year, at the next budget season, will realize that you can't get blood from a stone. And that's where we are now at this school district. And I've said it during this budget process, it's not just the face of the school district that's changing, it's the face of Fairfield. And I recognize we are in changing economic times nationally and globally. I watched Too Big to Fail last night. If you haven't read it or seen it, you should do one of the two. But we have to maintain the school system and we, we can't do it on air alone. So I just hope that people will know that next year and appropriately fund the schools. Thank you.
Mr. Carey?
Just very briefly, I wanted to thank Mr. Spino from Fair TV. I wasn't able to attend the meeting last Thursday because I had to attend a business meeting that evening. And he was kind enough to meet me Friday on his own time and download the public comment onto my laptop for me. So I had the opportunity to watch it over the weekend. So thank you very much, Mr. Spino. And I also want to thank the administration for all their hard work in coming up with these cuts and revisions to the cuts. Having had to preside over fairly sizable downsizing in 2000 when the tech industry imploded, I know it's a very difficult task and I appreciate the professionalism with which it has been handled. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Mrs. Iakono?
I just wanted to wrap up by saying if there's one takeaway from this, and it's that it has been a difficult budget season. And Dr. Title, I commend you and your staff again. You did exactly what you said you would do. You stood in front of the town boards. They asked where the cuts would come from, should the budget be reduced? And this is exactly what you said they would be. So I thank you for that. I thank you for your honesty and your forthrightness on putting this together. And I know it was not easy and I know that you don't really want to have to do any of this either. So thank you to you and your staff.
Mrs. Brand, you have something else?
Yeah, I apologize because of what recently came out in the press with potential funding that, please, that we might get back from the state. And obviously with the $800,000 for the referendum, if we are fortunate enough to have the $800,000 and we are, and/or we get some additional funds from the state, could we, I would like to ask that World Language be the thing that we reinstate?
Yeah, I mean, that would be our...
As a top priority?
I'm sure Dr. Title might make recommendations, but that would be our call. Do you want to say anything on that, Dr. Title?
Well, I think the last time the question was asked about what would we, what would I recommend, we restore were the $800,000 to be successful?
Right.
I think the state's very iffy and who knows? They may cut it in one place and give us more in another. They're famous for that. World Language would be at the top of my list in terms of, I think beyond that, I had talked about pay-to-play. Well, since that's not here, we can't restore it. I think then I would probably go to recommending, and I haven't really thought this all the way through, you know, direct services to kids that are in here that are being reduced. And there'd be a variety of places. But World Language would certainly be my first priority in terms of any restoration where the referendum to be successful.
Thank you. All right. I'm not going to say anything right now because you've all said it all. I, I could have told you when you elected me chairman, when was that, November, that this was going to be a tough budget year because that's just the way my life goes sometimes. But, but it really has been a tough year. And I want to thank everyone, all of the board members for your support, the administration and the parents out there and of course, teachers and staff. So thank you. And are we ready to vote on this? Public comment? That's right, we need public comment on this. Go ahead. Public comment on the, the...
Main motion.
The main motion? Nobody? Mike Barlow, 66 Howard Street. Excellent work. I commend you for this. I urge you all to vote for this as written. Thank you.
Ian Pascoe, representing the FEA. Like Mrs. Albin, I've lived through other difficult times. I know the decisions that you have to make are difficult. I know that different perspectives have been presented tonight. Everyone has their own opinion and their philosophy. However, what I'm disturbed by is that probably a year from now, we're going to be sitting in the same room faced by the same kind of environment that we're faced in now. And so the new programs that are being put forward, the elementary matrix, I think it's 400,000, but I'm not sure. The grandfathering will be another 346. And I'm not very optimistic that what's being cut this year, the clerical staff for the writing labs, the Spanish will be restored because I think you're going to be looking for money to fund what you're maintaining and moving forward. So I thank you for your hard work, but I am not feeling very good.
Yes, sir.
John Carmatito, 62 Oyster Road. I was going to get up last week when your parade of young men and women came to this podium, but the hour was getting late. One, I'd like to thank you for all the hard work and effort that you've put in. And if any of you have ever had any doubts as to why you do what you do, that parade of young men and women who spoke before this podium last week hopefully reinforced why you do it and will continue to do it, we hope. I don't have any answers for where you should or shouldn't cut because you shouldn't have to cut to this severity. My hope is that our newly-formed political action committee faces Fairfield Against Cutting Educational Spending will help boost you along this road. And for those of you in the audience who wish to participate in that referendum and to help us get the vote out, you know where to get me. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on the main motion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Okay, all in favor? I have Mr. Fattabean, Mr. Carey, Mrs. Albin, Mrs. Iakono, myself, Mrs. Dow, and Mrs. Brand. Against? Mrs. Zahn and Mr. Lu. Okay. Yes, Mr. Dr. Title has a comment?
I'd like to thank my staff for all the hard work they put in, in first of all, developing this budget in the first place. We did it very differently this year and a lot of the staff had to put up with a lot of changes to get the budget to where it was. And then the same staff had to go through the reverse process of trying to come up with these. I would also like to thank the parents who have sent me numerous emails of support, kind of giving me a, keep going, we're behind you, thank you for doing the best you can do under these trying circumstances. Those mean an awful lot to me. Some of the parents, I've seen your faces like so many nights. You must, you know, be unbelievably supportive of your kids in the school system. You're out all the time. You're, you were there at 12:30 in the morning when we were talking to RTM. It, it's just, it's very heartening to me. There were a lot of difficult choices in constructing the budget and then having to reduce the budget. And I'd like to thank the board for its support and questioning and pushing me to really think through what I was doing. Very challenging process all the way around. But I think on balance, when we get to June and I review some of the changes and accomplishments that we've made as a school system this year, right now, we find, feel at a real low and no one's feeling real good about this, including me. But if we reflect on the whole year, I think there'll be a lot to be proud of. And I'm still very proud of the school system and we will do everything we can in the fall to make it as top-notch as it can be with the resources allocated. I just wanted to say that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Title. Okay. So moving on, we're on item B, approval of policy. Recommended motion that the Board of Education approve policy number 5518, suicide prevention intervention and response. I have Mrs. Iakono seconded by Mr. Carey. Any discussion on this? Yes?
No. Just again, to encourage that it move forward because I think it's very valuable.
Did talk about it a couple of weeks ago. Anybody else have any discussion on this? Okay. Seeing none, public comment on this motion, this motion only? Someone coming up? Okay. Nancy's coming. Nancy.
Hi, Nancy Von Ulller, 92 Dave's Lane, Southport. I want to thank you for your support of this policy. I understand, I didn't hear from a lot of people on my email in support of this, but I understand that others did and that there's a likelihood that you will support it and I want to thank you for that. I want to thank Ms. Leonardi for some really amazing work on this. But I also want to remind you of the obvious, that policy and regulations are just a first step and the real, where the rubber hits the road is practice. And this issue is going to continue to require your attention and your commitment in order to make the difference that it can. Thank you.
Thank you. We ready to vote? All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. We're on item C, approval of policy that the Board of Education approve policy number 6200, curriculum. That's enclosure number two. Yes, Mrs. Brand? You've got a motion, that's right. Motion, seconded by Mrs. Zahn. Any discussion on this? I see no discussion or questions by board members. Public comment on this motion and this motion only? Seeing none, are we ready to vote? Okay, all in favor? It's unanimous. Item D, approval of policy. Recommended motion that the Board of Education approve policy number 6221, family, life, and sex education. Enclosure number three. Mrs. Zahn, seconded by Mrs. Brand. Discussion on this policy? Seeing none, public comment on this policy? Don't see any public, public comment. Are we ready to vote? Okay. All in favor? It's unanimous. E, approval of policy. Recommended motion that the Board of Education approve policy number 6132, emergency and disaster preparedness. Enclosure number four. I see Mrs. Zahn, seconded by Mrs. Iakono. Any questions or discussion on this policy? Okay. Seeing none, any public comment on this policy? Item E? Seeing none, are we ready to vote? Okay, all in favor? Unanimous. F, approval of policy. Recommended motion that the Board of Education approve policy number 6513, homeschooling. Enclosure number five. Any questions or discussion by board members? Yes, Mr. Carey. Oh, it's a motion, I'm sorry. I'm getting ahead of myself. I should know that. Mr. Carey, seconded by Mrs. Iakono. I apologize. Any questions or discussion on, on this? Seeing none, public comment? Seeing none, are we ready to vote? All in favor? Right along, it's unanimous. All right, so now we're on item number six, public comments and petitions. During this period, the board will hear comments and receive petitions from any citizen present at the meeting. Any single presentation must be limited to two minutes. An audiovisual equipment cannot be used without the advanced authorization of the chairman. The board will not hear comment on individual personal matters or comments addressed to a specific member of the board. Decorum will be enforced. Citizens are asked to comment on any voting item at the time the item is under consideration by the board. Is there any public comment tonight? I don't see any, so we will move on. Number five, six, seven, open board comment. Mrs. Iakono?
I'm sorry I wasn't here at the start of the meeting to give my report, but I did just...
I did.
Oh, you did. But I had a special project. I'm sorry. I just wanted to tell you that I'm disappointed to report to you that the Sherman project is not on track. We probably, we most likely, we, well, I don't even know where to start. It was a frustrating meeting yesterday. We need to go before the Town Planning and Zoning Commission and the Conservation Commission and that those meetings will not take place until the end of July, early August at best. So we can't get started until sometime in August. And therefore, we can't, we won't be finished with this project at the commencement of the upcoming school year. We did start discussions about possibly doing the kitchen work and getting that done for August, September timeframe. We talked about the administrative wing and doing work there. The problem is we don't have any swing space, so we can't do any construction inside the school because we have nowhere to move at the administrators or anybody in the administrative wing, too. It's not just administrators. As you know, we use that for teaching space. So that's not going to work. And then with regards to the HVAC system, obviously, we can't do any roofing work while kids are in the building, so. And the other issue with the HVAC is that there's, we're now looking at a six to eight, even a 10-week lead time on ordering the equipment. So I, I just wanted to highlight that to you. I sent a email this morning to the chairman of the committee and CC, the acting first selectman, and Sherry Stenick and board of selectmen member Jim Walsh, to ask if there was any way to somehow fast-track this with the other town commissions. I have no idea what the answer to that is. And that's where we are. And I wish I had more positive news to report on that end. And again, I apologize for not reporting on this at the beginning of the meeting.
So, so there's a real possibility that nothing will happen until next year?
There is a serious possibility that nothing, absolutely nothing, could happen until next, until next, until next summer, yes. That we might not have a kitchen. The kitchen is a maybe, administrative wing highly, highly doubtful, and the HVAC, no.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Brand?
Just two things.